Welcome everybody to today's legislative session for December 4, 2025. We're going to get started by warning everybody, please silence your cell phone devices, any other electronic devices so as not to interrupt the meeting. And if you please stand and join me for a pledge to the flag. Hey, we have roll call.
Benton, Paduk.
Here.
Amo.
Here.
Benelli.
Present.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Luhon.
Present.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Revella.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Toitel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Twenty present, one absent.
Thank you. Next, we have legislator Sutherland.
Yes, the legislature would like to recognize the following for the month of December. We have National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, December 7. Human Rights Day, December 10. Winter solstice, December 21. Christmas, December 25. Hanukkah, December 14 through the 22. And Kwanzaa, December 26 through January 1.
Hey, thank you very much. Now, we have public participation. We have two people to sign up on agenda items. I'll ask when we call your name to please come up to the microphone. You'll hit that button until the microphone turns red. You'll have three minutes to speak. The first is Valene Dashamace. And that's agenda item 16.
It's Valerie. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just put that up in front of your face. There you go.
That's better. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Valerie DeSharnay. I'm representing the Minosync DAR, which is the Daughters of American Revolution. And we are truly appreciative of you considering the project to renovate the Battle of Minosync Monument. It is near and dear to our hearts to have the monument renovated. We have been working tirelessly on this project since July 2024. And our hope is, is that the monument will be fully renovated in time for the battle's 250th anniversary, which is July 22, 2029. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Bynum Wade, agenda item number 16.
Good afternoon. Wendy Bynum Wade, and I'm the editor of the Goshen Independent, the oldest weekly paper in America. And I wasn't there at the beginning, but I've been the editor for a while now. And we have been very much in the corner of our DAR. We run consistently on the front cover every week for the past year and a half as they endeavor to try to make this monument restoration a reality with $5, $10, $25 checks at a time. And so I am thrilled that the legislature is considering taking on the yeoman's share of this project with this $250,000 resolution that will benefit not only Goshen but generations of patriots that have lived in Orange County and have lived the history that this monument represents. So thank you very much for your consideration today.
Thank you very much. Now, we have legislator Sullivan here.
I move to approve the minutes of August 14, September 4, and October 2.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. Now, as a housekeeping item, agenda item number 17 is being withdrawn pursuant to a request from the Law Department on behalf of DPW. The Law Department has been in communication with bond counsel, indicated that the county is unable to proceed with the bond resolution because the county has not completed the steps required pursuant to Article 5A of county law. The most recent amount of the bonding provided by our engineering consultants was different than the amount previously provided by them for which a public hearing was held. The discrepancy has to be addressed before the bond resolution can go forward. So if there are no objections, item number 17 will be withdrawn at this time, but we will move forward with the bonding at a later time once the procedural legal requirements have been adequately met. Next, we have legislator Sullivan.
I move to vote collectively on agenda items numbers 32 through 59, tax resolutions.
Second. There are no objections. These agenda items will be voted on collectively. Letter A, receive and file. Double A1, receive and file. A1, receive and file. And then we have number one, which will be a voice vote.
Legislator Ellers, resolution accepting and confirming the report of the apportionment of the mortgage tax for the period April 1, 2025 through September 30, 2025, as computed from statement filed by the county clerk.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number two is a voice vote.
Chairman Hines, resolution of the Orange County Legislature establishing and reporting the standard workday for elected officials to the New York State and local employees' retirement system.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number three is a voice vote.
Legislator Ellers, resolution approving the applications for the correction of certain errors appearing on the 2024 tax rolls for certain towns and districts and ordering the correction of said errors pursuant to Section 554 of the real property tax law.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. Number four is a voice vote.
Legislator Ellers, resolution approving the applications for the correction of certain errors appearing on the 2025 tax rolls for certain towns and districts and ordering the correction of said errors pursuant to Section 554 of the real property tax law.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number five is a voice vote.
Legislators Stiganga and Fagion, resolution fixing date, time, and place of meeting to organize the county legislature in 2026 and to conduct certain county business pursuant to Sections 151 and 152 of the county law. The organization meeting will be held on January 6, 2026, at 3:30 p.m. here in the Legislative Chamber.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number six.
Legislators Menuda and Benton with all Republicans and legislator Toitel's cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2025 Orange County budget for the Greenwood Lake Commission pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Paduk is added. Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Here.
Benelli.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Revella.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Toitel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Hines.
Twenty ayes.
Number seven.
Legislators Tui and Toitel, resolution setting a date for a public hearing pursuant to Section 268 of New York State County law with respect to a proposed acquisition of equipment for Orange County Sewer District Number One. The public hearing will be held on January 26, 2026, at 3:00 p.m. I'm sorry, 3:15 p.m. here in the Legislative Chamber.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Here.
Benelli.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Revella.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Toitel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Hines.
Twenty ayes.
Number 10 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Menuda, Tui, Revella, Fagion, with all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the design and construction of improvements to the maintenance facility at Windin Hills Park, Montgomery, New York, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $350,000, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $350,000 bonds of the county to finance that appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Here.
Benelli.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Revella.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Toitel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Hines.
Twenty ayes.
Number 10 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Menuda, Tui, Revella, Fagion, with all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the design and construction of improvements to the maintenance facility at Windin Hills Park, Montgomery, New York, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $350,000, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $350,000 bonds of the county to finance that appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk.
Yes.
Amo.
Here.
Benelli.
Here.
Cheney.
Here.
Ellers.
Here.
Fagion.
Here.
Feller.
Here.
Luhon.
Here.
Menuda.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Ramos.
Here.
Revella.
Here.
Ryskevich.
Here.
Sassy.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
Stiganga.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Toitel.
Here.
Tui.
Here.
Hines.
Twenty ayes.
Number 11 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Toitel, Menuda, Fagion, and Benton with all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the design and construction
Number 11 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tortell? Menuda? Fagion? And Benton? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the design and construction of improvements to various historical structures, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $700,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $700,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Paduk and Sierra are added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
And number 12 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Menuda? Benton? Fagion? And O'Donnell? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the design and construction of improvements to the maintenance facility at Camp LaGuardia, Chester, New York, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $3,800,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,800,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
Number 13 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tui? Menuda? Fagion? And Benton? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements to preserve and secure the county-owned Camp LaGuardia, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $6,200,000, appropriating $1,200,000 in addition to the $5 million the heretofore apportioned, appropriate, I'm sorry, for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the county in the principal amount of $1,200,000 in addition to the $5 million bonds heretofore authorized for said purpose to finance said additional appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Paduk and Sierra are added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
And number 14 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Tui? Benton? Fagion? And Revella? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the renovation and construction of an addition to the D P W building, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $5,400,000, appropriating $1,900,000 in addition to the $3,500,000 heretofore appropriated for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the county in the principal amount of $1,900,000 in addition to the $3,500,000 bonds heretofore authorized for said purpose to finance said additional appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
And number 15 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Menuda? Benton? O'Donnell? And Fagion? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the construction of improvements to the county-owned Goshen Garage, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $2,800,000, appropriating $1,400,000 in addition to the $1,400,000 heretofore appropriated for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the county in the principal amount of $1,400,000 in addition to the $1,400,000 bonds heretofore authorized for said purpose to finance said additional appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
Number 16 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators? Menuda? Tortell? Fagion? And Cheney? With all Republicans and legislator Luhon as cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the restoration of the 1862 Minosync Monument, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $250,000, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $250,000 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. Legislator O'Donnell.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the county executive for seeing this project through and congratulate the D A R on the hard work you've done on behalf of all the citizens of Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other legislator? Ryskevich is added. Sassy is added. Roll call. O'Donnell's added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland? Tortell? Tui? Hines? 20 ayes.
Number 17 was withdrawn, so we move to 18, and that's a voice vote.
Legislators Sutherland and Sassy? With all Republicans and legislators Tortell and Luhon as cosponsors. Resolution making a supplemental appropriation to the 2025 Orange County budget for the Orange County Department of Emergency Services Police Services to accept revenue generated from bus patrol stop-arm violations.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Sierra and Paduk are added. Just for the general public, this is fine money that's generated from school buses when the stop-arm comes out and the videos come on and watch the cars flying past the stop-arm of the bus. It's a safety initiative created by Orange County, but the technology came to us from elsewhere. The program is so popular that we've been contacted by other counties trying to figure out how to get into this and run it. And when you see that number of $800,000, that's our cut, which is only, I think, 45% of the fine money. So it's, it's unbelievable how often people pass school buses. And hopefully, when the people get the fines, they learn their lesson not to do this again to make it safe for all. And as of right now, every school district in Orange County has voted to participate in this except for mine, the town of Cornwall, which is atrocious, and I'm still working on it to try to change their mind. The Cornwall School Board voted no to not participate in this. And I sit here embarrassed on their behalf. And I've been working hard to try to get them to change their minds. But any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Next up is Number 19, which is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassy and Sutherland? With all Republicans and legislators Tortell and Luhon as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Departments of Probation and Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to submit grant applications to the United States Departments of Justice, Homeland Security, and New York State Departments of Homeland Security and Emergency Services and Transportation for law enforcement and public safety and emergency services communication purposes pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Paduk is added. Sierra is added. Menuda is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 20 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sassy and Sutherland? With all Republicans and legislators Tortell and Luhon as cosponsors. Resolution authorizing the county executive in conjunction with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, the County Attorney's Office, and the Departments of Probation, Social Services, Mental Health, Medical Examiner's Office, and Emergency Services, Emergency Management, to submit applications for grant programs offered by the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name. Paduk and Sierra are added. Menuda is added. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 21 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sutherland and Benelli? With all Republicans and legislators Tortell and Luhon as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from a New York State Office of Mental Health to the Orange County Department of Mental Health to support school-based mental health services pursuant to Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name, please. Paduk is added. Sierra is added. Now, this is something the Cornwall School District got right. They're jumping into this program, so give them credit where it's due. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 22 is a voice vote.
Legislators Sutherland and Ramos? With legislators Tortell and Luhon as cosponsors. Resolution accepting and appropriating funds from a New York State Office of Mental Health to the Orange County Department of Mental Health for supported housing stipends and targeted inflationary increase pursuant to Section 99-H of the General Municipal Law and Section 4.09 of the Orange County Charter.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 23 is a voice vote.
Legislators Benelli? Ramos? Menuda? And Tortell? Resolution of the Orange County Legislature giving notice of intent to assume lead agency status under State Environmental Quality Review Act SECRE with respect to the Valley View wastewater treatment plant upgrade in the town of Goshen and making a preliminary determination that this project be classified as an unlisted action.
Second. Any discussion? Sierra is added. All in favor? I'm sorry, Tui is added. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Number 24 is a bond resolution requiring two-thirds vote.
Legislators Sutherland? Ramos? Cheney? And Fagion? With all Republicans and legislator Tortell's cosponsors. Bond resolution dated December 4th, 2025. Bond resolution of the County of Orange, New York, authorizing the establishment of a new capital project for the construction of improvements to the Valley View Water Plant and Water Building, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $108,400, appropriating said amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $108,400 bonds of the county to finance said appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Add my name. Paduk's added. Legislator Luhon? Added. Legislator Sierra is added. Legislator Tui is added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Emo? Benelli? Cheney? Ellers? Fagion? Feller? Luhon? Menuda? O'Donnell? Ramos? Revella? Ryskevich? Sassy? Sierra? Staganga? Sutherland?
Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
And number twenty-five.
Legislator Ellers, with all Republicans and legislator Luhana's cosponsors. Resolution finally adopting the proposed budget of Orange County for the year 2026 pursuant to Section 360 of County Law and Section 4.07 of the Orange County Charter and Section 4-12 of the Administrative Code.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Benelli, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Feller, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
Number twenty-six.
Legislator Ellers, with legislator Luhana's cosponsor. Resolution making appropriations for the conduct of the government of Orange County, Orange County Social Services District, Orange County Sewer District Number One, the Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Cromline Creek and the Beaver Dam Lake District for the fiscal year 2026 pursuant to Sections 356 and 360 of the County Law and Sections 4-8 and 4-9B of the Orange County Administrative Code.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Benelli, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Feller, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
Number twenty-seven.
Legislator Ellers, with legislator Luhana's cosponsors. Resolution providing for the raising of taxes required by the Orange County budget for general government purposes, social services district purposes, Orange County Sewer District Number One purposes, Orange County Small Watershed Protection District Number One for Cromline Creek purposes, and Beaver Dam Lake District purposes, and levying taxes pursuant to Section 360 of the County Law, Section 900 of the Real Property Tax Law, and Section 4.08 of the Orange County Charter and Administrative Code.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Benelli, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Feller, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
And number twenty-eight.
Legislator Ellers, with legislator Luhana's cosponsor. Resolution adopting the 2026 capital program pursuant to the Orange County Charter, Section 4.07.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Tuie's added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Benelli, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Feller, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
Number twenty-nine.
Legislator Ellers, with legislator Luhana's cosponsor. Resolution making appropriation to Cornell Cooperative Extension Association of Orange County pursuant to Subdivision Eight of Section 224 of County Law.
Second. Any discussion? Legislator Fagion is added. Legislator Ryskevich is added. Legislator Sierra is added. Legislator Ellers is added. Legislator Cheney is added. Roll call.
Paduk?
Yes.
Aimo, Benelli, Cheney, Ellers, Fagion, Feller, Luhan, Menuda, O'Donnell, Ramos, Rivella, Ryskevich, Sassy, Sierra, Stiganga, Sutherland, Tortel, Tuie, Hines. Twenty eyes.
Number thirty is a voice vote.
Legislator Ellers. Resolution for the levy of the amount of certain unpaid school taxes returned to the Commissioner of Finance as unpaid pursuant to Section 1330, Subdivision Five of Real Property Tax Law.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Thirty-A is received and filed. We move to thirty-one, which is a voice vote.
Legislator Ellers. Resolution for the levy of the amount of certain unpaid village taxes returned to the Commissioner of Finance as unpaid pursuant to Section 1442, Subdivision Four of the Real Property Tax Law and Orange County Local Law Number Seven of 1978.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Thirty-one-A is receive and file, and will vote collectively from numbers thirty-two through fifty-nine. Is there any... There's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried unanimous. Okay, we have three people signed up to speak after the meeting, and our first speaker will be Brian Flannery, ADA Transit.
Apologies for the penmanship. That's ADA Transition Plan. My name is Brian Flannery. I'm with Independent Living, Inc., a disability services and advocacy organization, operating and serving our friends, neighbors, residents, family members with disabilities here in Orange County for almost forty years. And apologies, I'm gonna read from my phone to stay within the time limit. First, I want to say thank you to the legislature and to the county for hosting our July 35th anniversary ADA Americans with Disabilities Act anniversary celebration here in this very room a little, a few months ago this year. And I also want to say that beyond that particular event, we have consistently found a welcoming and supportive body in this legislature and across county departments, officials, and personnel. For that, I want to extend our sincere appreciation and commend the county's commitment to resident... to welcoming residents and visitors with disabilities. I was very pleased to hear from Deputy Executive Poor just, just before this meeting, that work is well underway on implementing the county's ADA transition plan, that a working group has convened and they're thinking about prioritization. That is wonderful news. But I also want to reiterate my offer I've made a few months now to make my organization, Independent Living, available to the county to coordinate and support the interested person input requirement of 28 CFR 35.150D1. That input is required for a compliant transition plan, and I have not seen any invitation for folks with disabilities and organizations like mine to leverage the substantial and expansive experience and expertise we have in living with and supporting Orange County residents who live with disabilities. We also truly commend the county for undertaking its comprehensive evaluation process that took the better part of a year and committing to a twenty-year project of ameliorating the four thousand barriers identified in that self-evaluation. And I urge the county to incorporate the knowledge, experience, and expertise of residents with disabilities and organizations like my own, Independent Living, into the implementation of that transition plan. Thank you again for the support that we've received over the course of this year. I cannot believe it is December, but I look forward to an ongoing partnership with Orange County for, for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Wallace. The transition plan. Yeah, that microphone there is pretty...
My name is Tracy Wallace. I am the ADA Coordinator from Independent Living. Good afternoon, legislators, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am going to speak about the transition plan. You just heard my colleague, Brian, say thank you for, again, hosting our ADA celebration here and our continued relationships that we have with Orange County legislators and Orange County in general. And we have really good relationship with everyone, and I just appreciate the ongoing support. So I do want to speak about the transition plan from like an advocacy perspective. So the purpose of this plan is to not simply comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is to ensure that every resident, regardless of disability, can safely and independently access county buildings, programs, services, transportation systems, and public spaces. With prioritization, it becomes a roadmap for equity, accountability, and inclusion. I just, it's gonna be really short. I really just want to say that Orange County lead by example, not because we're forced to comply, but because we choose to value every resident. And thank you for your time and your leadership on this issue.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Gabrielle Hill. Free bus fares.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm gonna wear two hats today. So my first hat will be representing the Newbury Transportation Advisory Committee. And what we are asking, is there a way to extend the free bus fare service? Many families take advantage of that. It helps them out in many different ways. With the rising cost of food, clothing, and housing, every penny saved is a penny that is worthwhile. So I hope that there's a way that we can have that conversation to extend that service, if not for the entire year of 2026, at least until the spring of 2026. And secondly, as this year comes to a quiet end, some of you will be transitioning to other endeavors. And I want to take this time to say thank you very much for your service. Thank you, Mr. Luhan. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, who I know, and everyone else who will be transitioning. In the words of Margaret Chase Smith, "Public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly. It must be a complete dedication to the people and this nation." Thank you for stepping up on behalf of the folks around you. Being a public servant requires sacrifice, time away from your family and loved ones, time away from activities that you used to enjoy. It is not easy, but the rewards certainly outweigh the challenges. As your newly-elected county legislator representing District Six, I look forward to working with each of you. And if we haven't met, I hope we will do so before I leave tonight. My platform is very simple. In the words of Frederick Douglass, "I can work with anyone doing the right thing and no one doing the wrong thing." Let's work together to make Orange County shine bright like a diamond and live up to our pledge that all our residents will experience the liberty and justice we declare. Happy holidays. Thank you for your service. I look forward to working with you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. That does it for our public speaking. I know Minority Leader Paduk wants to say a few words. He can't be with us at our next meeting on the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's a little emotional for me because it's my last day that I'll be sitting here as the minority leader in the Orange County Legislature. I've had the opportunity to work with three county executives, seven different legislatures, nine supervisors and town boards, and two great city mayors. Been a really, been a big honor for me. I'm very thankful for all the support I've had over the years, all the department heads that I've worked with here that like me and get mad at me for certain things, right, Deb? But it's been a great ride, and I hope we made Orange County a little bit better. I'm very proud of all your support and friendship over the years, so I just wanted to say thank you and sayonara.
It's America.
And thank you for your service, Mike. You've done a great job. I think it's twenty-eight years, which is a record for many. I think Lee has that time, probably Michael has that time, but, uh, you put your time and dedication into this, and you did definitely harass the Budget Department over the years. I witnessed it for quite a while, but thank you for your service, and we're gonna miss you. I'm not gonna be here either, but we're gonna miss you. But the next meeting for everybody is December 18th at 10:00 a.m., where we wrap up the county government for the year, if you will, and I guess there's... We have something for you downstairs, so, Mike, after the meeting. Thank you. And a motion to adjourn is in order. And we are adjourned. Thank you.